The legislative chambers over here in the back of the room to the west is an automatic defibrillator in case somebody needs that for safety reasons and also if you have a phone, I'd ask you to silence it or please put it on vibrate or please turn it off. With that, we will begin the Douglas County Board of Equalization meeting. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Craft is absent, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here. I had a letter A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, August 20th, 2019. Item B is called for meeting and set Tuesday, September 10th, 2019 is the date for hearing on certified assessment and corrections. What's the will of the Board?
Motion approved.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Commissioner Boyle's vote won't appear due to technical difficulties, but he votes yes, as do the rest of the commissioners present. Motion passes.
Item C is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Equalization-related matters that are not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seeing none, we have items D, E, F, G, H, and I. What's the will of the Board? Motion approved by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan, and that includes adjournment?
Yes.
It does. With that, please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We'll now call to the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Craft is absent, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A, item one is menacing claims. Letter A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, August 20th, 2019. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019. What's the will of the Board?
Motion for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Please vote. Left ear is better than right ear.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item two is the consent agenda. There are eight items on the consent agenda. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Item G, and I think Dr. Poor is here this morning.
Good morning, Moebus members. I declare Douglas County Health Department. What was your question?
Good morning. Doctor, on number one under item G is the Health Department requests approval for the following agreement with Women's Fund of Omaha regarding the expansion of STD, sexually transmitted disease, testing and outreach, $891,635 grant-funded. You know, this is something that we've come to again and again because we've had difficulty that STDs have played too big of a part in our community, and your reports reflect that on an annual basis, and we appreciate the updates. I was just wondering, on this particular item, the source of the grant funding, what specifically we're going to be using it for, and whether any of it would go to actual treatment and possibly bringing our STD numbers down?
Good question, Commissioner. This is really a broad coalition that's going on. It's called the Adolescent Health Project, and there are many partners in this community who are participating in this. We have the two FQHCs, we have individuals that are community organizations and so on, and what this project is really looking at, it's looking at treatment, it's looking at screening, screening in the clinic and screening in libraries, so to say. It looks at education, education to students, education to family members, because that's education in school, you know? That is the project that also got that changed. So this is a broad sense, and the vision is that every young person who enters a clinic setting finds the same type of welcoming experience there. This is the fourth year where this grant funding is being provided, and as you can see, it's quite an amount of money. And what we are seeing is, I think I can say that truly, we see successes from this program. We see that individuals in this community feel they are being heard, they feel their voice is heard, and also what we are seeing is about last month or two months ago, Iowa just showed the rate of STDs, how it is increasing in that state dramatically. And I looked at our data, our data is flat at this time, and I think that is due to the efforts that are going on. We are seeing more testing occurring, and more testing means more finding individuals, but I think we can show to the funders of this that we are really seeing an impact of this funding.
That's great, and I guess the source of the funding for the 891,000 is what?
It's the Women's Fund, and the Women's Fund is bringing the fundings together from different private funders.
Right, so there are no public funds in this particular request?
No public funding in this project. We do have public funding for STD testing from the state, but that's a smaller amount.
So if I hear you correctly, the bulk of this money will go for testing, screening, and education. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. When folks are treated, you know, they're actually, you're tested, you test positive, and now we seek to treat that, where is that done and how is that financed, if you know?
Treatment is done, for example, in our STD clinic. We treat individuals free of charge if they are between 18 and 24 years of age.
At the Douglas County Health Department?
At the Douglas County Health Department STD clinic, so that's where they get treated. They also can get treated in the FQHCs, and whoever is a partner in this project, they get treated free of charge if they are in that age range.
And just for the greater world, we're on local access. Where is that STD clinic?
Our STD clinic is at 42nd and Woodworth. It's at the Douglas County Health Department.
Great. You'd give us an annual report on these and a lot of other metrics of community health. When are you due to do that again? Do you know?
Anytime.
For some reason, I thought it was on, but I'm thinking now it hasn't been.
Anytime, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Doctor, before you leave, I just want to thank you so much for the work you do, your dedication, and I know that you had a loss of your mother this morning, who was 92, and special person, and she could be very proud of the person you are. I just want you to know that we feel the compassion, Mike and I and all of us on this board, and we were talking to you earlier, so thank you for even being here, which you shouldn't have been, but thank you for your total dedication to your work, and the job you do is so perfect.
Thanks for your support.
Thank you very much. With that, there's motion second. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item four is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Commissioners-related items that are not on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. I know the rules are not on the agenda, so I'm going to speak about them. Rules are a little unclear, need to be maybe rewritten, for example, under citizens' comments. First of all, the agenda themselves do not speak, so they can't give reasonable notice. You need to rephrase that. I want to protest also that we're restricted to be able to comment on things that are not on the agenda. To me, that smacks in the face of the Nebraska Opening Meetings Act that says any citizen can come down and talk about things at these meetings. Yes, you can make reasonable rules, but reasonable rules do not exclude a citizen from being able to talk on the topics that are here today. I wonder how many people have come down here and decided they won't show up again because they can't talk on the topics that you're here on the radio and read in the paper. And then I have been told before that you can have two-way communication by some of you on the Board here. That smacks in the face of what this says. It says, as a result of being limited to not talking about anything on the agenda, you people will not discourse with us. End of story. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to item six and a public hearing. Letter A is the addition to the premise license for GMT LLC doing business Miracle Hills Golf and Tennis at 1516 North, 115 Plaza, Omaha, 68154 Douglas County. This is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing at this time.
Good morning, Commissioners. Andrew Collins of Erickson-Siderstrom here on behalf of the applicant. I have the general manager, Phil Palmer, here with me as well. We're just here to answer any questions you may have on the application for addition.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We'll go on to item seven, which is committee discussion action. Letter A is the finance committee. Item one is the budget report. Commissioner Morgan and Boyle.
As presented.
Okay. With that, we'll go on to item C. Item one is the monthly Douglas County Youth Center report. Superintendent Alexander.
Good morning. We can't find this report here.
Thank you.
We will, when you all get your report. We will start on slide number three. I'm going to turn it over to Mark, I think, on the second slide that I get us to, to talk about some surveys that we're doing with parents to gather some information, and then he is leading a charge referred to as reimagine juvenile justice, and so he's going to give you a brief update on that as well. So slide number three. We've had five students earn their diploma this year. Again, we appreciate Metro Community College, as we still have two kids that are enrolled in college, and they waive all the fees and the textbook charges. Really gives the kids an opportunity to try something that they may have not otherwise experienced. So slide number seven. So the last parent's meeting was held August 14th. Eleven families participated. Saturday, October 19th, we're trying it on a weekend to see if that helps with the participation, and Mark was smart enough to look and found a Nebraska Cornhusker bi-week, so we won't conflict with that. Qualtrics, as I'd reported previously, has been working with us to develop a tool to report and monitor feedback from parents. That contract will not be renewed, but the survey that Mark's going to discuss with you now is, the survey that will be used to gather that information, and we're going to do, our role will then be to track that data in-house. So I will turn that over to Mark.
Thank you, Brad. Mark LaFleur, Douglas County Youth Center. The parent survey through Qualtrics, it's been generated as a result of our conversations with parents at our parents' meeting. We started parents' meetings, as you may know, back in January with Commissioner Borgeson, and since that time, we've even had a family community forum, which Commissioner Rogers was on the panel to discuss issues with families. So as we've met with families over the course of these previous eight months, we took questions that they brought to us, and we formulated it into three areas. The first one is with regards to entrance at the youth center. Of course, we report what we do monthly, and we're proud of what we do, but it's equally important to assure that parents are getting the information and are getting the connectors that they need as their young people are returning home or to the community. And the parent survey initially regarding the youth center reflects some of the questions for families as they're going to different locations. And our second survey addressed court involvement for parents, and based off of what they were saying and what their questions were, this was our formulated question. So we can ask all of our parents, and our intent, as I reported last month, our intent is to survey all of the parents that come through the youth center and give them the opportunity to respond to their process and what they're witnessing. And lastly, returning to home. It's imperative that there aren't gaps when young people are returning to school, and we want to make sure that parents are having their questions answered, and we want to make sure that we understand that what things are working well and what things aren't working quite so well. So the intent with all three of these parent surveys is to share the information with each of the system points. Now, with Qualtrics not being on the table, it'd be a little bit more labor-intensive. Our intent is to put our surveys on laptops and also to include the surveys on our webpage to get as much information as possible. But our intent is to make sure that we're responsive to the needs of what parents say that they're experiencing, and that's our goal with regards to that. The second piece that Brad mentioned, you received a flyer, this was a really cool training opportunity. From the youth center, we actually had to apply to come to this train-the-trainer training, and we did, and there were over 50 different municipalities that applied, and Douglas County was recognized as one of the 16 states that were recognized to go through this training. And it's centered from the school and main institute out of Boston, Massachusetts, and the training is reimagining juvenile justice. It gives us a chance to do a cross-system approach with different system points to discuss what could they do that could possibly make things better for youth at their system point. And the cornerstone of this from reimagining juvenile justice is looking from a positive youth development model and asking ourselves the question, how did what we do benefit the youth? How is what we're doing benefiting the families? How are we responding to what the youth are saying, what their needs are? And the neat thing about this, it brings us back to Douglas County where we're asking these questions. So we have training that is set up. We've had meetings with the different system points, Latino Center, Urban League, Public Defender's Office from the courts, the JAC, County Attorney, probation may be participating, that hasn't been determined yet, but we recognize 15 different system points, Native American Society, and all of those points are sending one or two individuals for these trainings that are starting on September 18th, and there are six total that's involved, and on the back of the sheet, it talks about each of the training opportunities, and the individuals have to commit to attend all six of the trainings. And I'm really excited to be a part of it. I think it's imperative that we're always asking, how can we reimagine juvenile justice to make it better for youth? And the neat thing with this particular draft is it also addresses the racial and ethnic disparities that young people, that we're seeing throughout the system, and it gives each system point an opportunity to be reflective and to be able to say, hey, if we went back 50 years, what would we do differently to make sure that young people aren't getting in the system that shouldn't be? And it really will be a handy tool moving forward, and I'm very appreciative of supporting the county in this endeavor.
We'll move on to slide number 11. A little worried about Greg, he was right behind Mark, so... If you recall, last time we presented, Lindsey Crowell and some other folks from Region Six and so forth talked to you about the crisis response program through Lutheran Family Services, and they work with law enforcement in a few different local counties, and it's a 24/7 response. And we had followed up to that meeting on August 21st, and we brought a group of people together and discussed kind of next steps, you know, where do we see this going? What was really encouraging is that Lutheran Family Services plans on having a representative in each of the Omaha precincts, the police department precincts here soon. Those jobs are open, so if you know anyone that, they have to be an LMHP, right?
Yeah.
So if you know anyone with those credentials, those jobs are open, and they're anxious, they're anxious to get those hired. Lindsey's actually taken a position full-time with the Omaha Police Department, so her position is going to be coming up, though I think it's open now as well. So I know they're anxious to get those positions filled and have that program fully staffed. Slide number 12. Our count today is 71. Again, Commissioner Craft's not here, but he had requested the actual numbers in addition to the forecasted numbers, so that's what you see there. So the average daily population through July 31st of 2019 was 80. That's the actual number as well. Average length of stay for all kids, including those that are in adult court, is 27, and then, so we're forecasting 975 admissions this year based on what we've seen through the end of July. Slide number 17, please. This is the average length of stay for those youth that were with us over 24 hours. So those that were not on probation, the average length of stay was 42 days. For those that were on probation, it was 42 days as well. Adult court is 84, and overall, we're at 44. Next slide, 18. So this is the young people that were with us less than 24 hours. So I was asked to add the average on the right, which I did. So we average 20 youth that are released who have stayed with us less than 24 hours, who are not on probation. Less than one were on probation, 2.6 were in adult court, and the average length of stay in hours for that group of people was 3.8 hours. Slide number 19. Again, you see the actual numbers on the far right and the forecasted numbers the second to the right. There he is. So the forecasted numbers for the adjudicated are 355, pre-adjudicated 502, pre-trial 111, sentenced seven, for a total of 975. We'll skip all the way to slide number 25. So here are the reasons for admissions so far in 2019. New charges, 65% of our admissions are for new charges, 18% capius, unlawful absence, and 13% violation of probation, so the combined total for probation is about 31%, which, if you look back, it's down from where it was, which was typically running about 40%, and that may have something to do, might be a little bit too early for that to have moved the scale at all, but the legislation that went into effect July 1 may have some impact on that as well. Slide 26, please. And here are the top 10 offenses for those that come to the youth center on new charges. Robbery, 18%, assault, domestic assault, 14%, possession of controlled substance with intent to deliver, 9%, theft by unlawful taking, 9%, theft by receiving, 9%, terroristic threats, 6%, unlawful occupancy, 5%, gun charges, 5%, burglary, and there is no attempted burglary, so it should just be burglary, 4%, sexual assault, 4%. Slide 27. Commissioner Kavanaugh had asked that we move this into, instead of numbers, use percentages. So that's all this table has been converted to percentages, which I think is definitely a better way to report this statistic out. So 54%, these are the actual numbers, which are identical to the forecasted numbers. 54% of the admissions so far in 2019 are African-American, 22% Caucasian, 20% Hispanic-Mexican, 2% Native American, and 2% Asian. Slide 29, please. The home program. Again, the actual numbers versus the forecasted numbers. 187 is what we're forecasting for admissions this year, and based on what we've seen for successful completions, we're forecasting 103 for successful completions. Slide 31, please. Academic credits earned. The education department just continues to really impress me. 777 is the forecasted number for credits earned for the youth at the youth center. Again, our goal is always that they leave better off than they arrive, and we feel really good about what we're doing for these kids academically. Truancy is such an issue, and we want them to feel good about their opportunities moving back to their home school when they leave, and a part of that is to make sure that they haven't fallen further behind, and in fact, we want them to move forward while they're with us. Slide 33. This one I've got, I was looking at this last night. 2019, the forecasted number should be 161. The actual number is 94. That's for kids that have came to the youth center with an individualized education plan, and then you can see the numbers for those that return, and those change too, and I apologize... apologize for that. Seventy-five is the forecasted number, and forty-four is the actual number. Medical mental health. So, our nurses, sick call and other work that they do with the young people, two-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty is the forecasted number for them. Mental health contacts is one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-two, and our pediatrician or practitioner is expected to see nine-hundred-and-sixty-two, or have nine-hundred-and-sixty-two appointments through the course of two thousand and nineteen. Slide thirty-nine. Youth on medication. I can't recall. I know I was asked to add the average to the right. I can't recall if that was done last month, it may have been. But you can see the average number of kids that are on the psychotropic medication, excuse me, each month. Fourteen stimulants, eight, fourteen for antidepressants, less than one for anti-anxiety, two for anti-seizure, nine for asthmatics, and one for diabetics. Slide forty. And here are the diagnosis. Again, the average is on the right, and we just started tracking the diagnosis specifically in January, so you just see the seven months. Average is eight for PTSD, eleven for ADHD, one for anxiety, point four for autism, one for schizophrenia, eight depression, nine mood disorder, twenty substance abuse disorder, four impulse control, and point seven for Tourette's. Slide forty-one. This is another slide we were asked to add back in June. So, you can see cannabis clearly leads the way, and then meth, and five in June, four in July, cannabis sixteen in June, twenty-eight in July, or in July. Then, we had one with issues related to inhalants in July. Slide forty-two. Sexually transmitted diseases. You wish the positive test was zero, but it's certainly trending in the right direction, which is good. So, the actual numbers this year, three-sixty-one tested and thirty-two who tested positive. And that completes my report. I'll turn it over to Greg.
Before Greg gets up, Commissioner Boyle, you had a question, or do you want to wait after Greg?
Greg Hepburn, Douglas County Youth Center. As the sheets are being handed out to you all, I'll just kind of highlight a few things that stood out to me over the course of the month. One of them is since legislation on July first, we have eight youth that are currently within the facility under violation of probation, four of which have come in in the past two weeks, and then four of which have come in between July and the month of August as well too. So, that's one thing that kind of stood out because I know that, that's one of the things that the legislation was supposed to specifically address. So, just kind of highlighting that. Couple of other things that stood out are, there's kind of an uptake in adult charges that have come in as well too. Probably, probably the, let's see, the numbers were, since July first, I think we're sitting at about, that are currently with us, about four or five youth that have come in with adult charges. So, the point behind that is that the severity of some of the charges that are coming in are increasing. I mean, these are things of... One of them, for example, was the assault first degree, you know, and two youth came in with that charge. So, just kind of highlighting the severity of a couple of the charges that have come in. One thing also that stood out in particular to me, that I was able to identify and then contact the parties to try to see if we can have any resolution with the process being held up, but with evaluations. I think that evaluations are being done at a much quicker rate than what they had been in the past. So, what I noticed is that there was one case in particular where on six-twenty-six, youth was ordered to eval. Eval was actually completed on seven-three, but court was set out until eight-sixteen. And unfortunately, we weren't able to get that court date moved up. But those, there were probably about two or three situations where I noticed that type of event occurred. And I'll highlight, and what I've been doing is, on those situations, in the commentary section, I've been keeping a little bit more specific notes. So, I'll read to you an example that happened, and this is maybe about, on the far left, our far-right column, about, maybe about six rows up. If you can read that, ordered to out-of-home placement on eight-five-nineteen, then ordered to complete an eval and has disposition set for nine-twenty-six. So, that evaluation has not been completed, but will be completed prior to that date. And so, those are some things that, you know, we can help move the youth to his next placement a little bit more expeditiously. There's another situation just a few rows underneath that, had court on eight-thirteen, but there was no consultation between the evaluator and the psychiatrist. The evaluator, who was the psychiatrist, but did not correspond with the person who was prescribing the meds ongoing. And so, because of that, it was continued until ten-thirty-one. So, just a couple of cases like that that stood out to me, you know. But with, in conjunction with case processing, we're looking at implementing a system that would, one, put me in contact with the eleven o'clock calls after the detention hearings, and then, two, move, move toward a process where every youth after a detention hearing would have an email correspondence that goes out between myself as the facilitator of probation, county attorney, public defender's office, and if HHS is involved, they would be involved with that process as well too. So, there would be a little bit more accountability, a little bit more fluid conversation that take place as well too. So, those are just some of the things that we're looking to work towards to help rectify situations like this.
Okay. Commissioner Boyle.
Thank you for the report. I do have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
Greg, I'd like to ask you, one of the things that I get very concerned about is when these violations of, these conditions of, you know, being in a wrong place or whatever it's called, you know, it just kind of makes me a little crazy. I wonder whether, you know, I've said before that what I think about these juveniles that are put on, that are found in violation of an order, a court order, that, you know, it's my opinion, and that's all it is, is that these young people are not really too used to a structured life in a lot of ways. And so, when they're told not to do something that is just kind of, I mean, it's just not really handled too well or taken too seriously or whatever. And I get concerned about finding violations, and I know that's not your thing, you have to react to it, but I'm really concerned about it because it just kind of, it really, to me, sets them on a path of spiraling down because it just exacerbates what situation they're already in. And I guess I don't expect to have an answer from you, but I am really concerned about it because I think it sets them on a path that's not good. And it's, I don't know how we intervene, you know. Many times when we were talking about the Juvenile Justice Center, people would come down, and when I would attend many meetings and others as well, I'm sure heard the same thing. Why don't you just, why don't you invest in stopping this behavior? Well, we really don't have, we don't really have the ability, the schools do to some extent, but they're into a lot of things. And that's something else I wanted to ask. I don't know if you're the person I should be asking, but...
Sure.
I guess I'm not. I'd probably ask Brad or Mr. O'Fluer about it. But what about violations? Do you feel that it sends them on a, what's your opinion about, do you think it's, is there any alternative to it?
To violation of probation?
Yeah, I mean, is there something else that can be done? I may not want them picked up or anything, or, you know, but it just seems like it, they're probably, if they did it once, they'll do it twice, and it'll just continue. I guess I really, I don't think there's an answer to it.
You know, honestly, all I can do is just give you my opinion on it. In terms of violation of probation, you want some accountability measurements for youth because you have, because you have to have them understand that the way that a lot of them have been facilitating and conducting their lives with any, without any type of accountability is not acceptable. But you do run a risk of them continuing with that process of just doing the, having the type of behaviors that they want without acceptance of consequence. And in doing so, they have to, they have to understand that there are measurements out there that will hold them accountable at some point. So, just in terms of my personal opinion, I think that violation of probation is something that's necessary. I do not think, and I do not think that there should be a longer extended period of time where they should be with us. So, I think that I'd like to see the process move a little bit more fluidly. But I also understand that in terms of placements, with some of the actions that take place, for example, we have two youth that are sitting on violation of probation for attacking and assaulting staff. Well, what that does is it precludes them from other placements. And, you know, it directs them to specific PRTF placements because those are the only type of placements that will accept them at that time, and then you have waiting lists to deal with after that. So, you know, it's just, it's a negative cycle that affects and impacts youth, but at the same time, it's something that is necessary because of the limited placement options that we have for them.
You said something that really triggered something. Greg, you said something about how the, they haven't had a, just pretty much what I said, they haven't had an orderly life. And I'm concerned because there, is there any monitoring or any guidance that's given to them? I mean, if they're said, ordered to do something, and, you know, to avoid people or to stop whatever it is, is there anybody who intervenes and helps them do that, or is it just a situation where they're on their own?
There's professionals, professionals, there's professionals throughout, you know, probation, you know, has accountability measurements for them, you know, the court order has accountability measurements for them. When they're in detention, there's accountability measurements, you know, and a reward system that goes along with it as well too. And the same thing, I'm sure, with multiple placements. It's, from the youth that I've spoken with, it's just a difficult process to accept accountability and responsibility when you have not necessarily had those things implemented in your life for the younger.
I'm gonna, it's time for me to stop over and spend a day with you folks, I think. I really appreciate the work you do very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have quite a few more questions. I'll try to be brief with Mr. Alexander. Thanks, Greg. One of the, one of the things I discovered recently was that when, there's a young man who was in, who was about fifteen, and he had two siblings in his home, and his mother was there, and she left. And so, he was in charge of the other children. And to complicate things, the children were going to school, which is okay, but, so he got them on the bus, and when he did that, he missed his bus. And so, he was truant quite a few times. Anyway, he got expelled and was sent to Blackburn or somewhere. And the difficulty was that, first of all, he wasn't, he was just told he was expelled and supposed to go to the alternative school. There was no transportation for him, and he really didn't even know where it was. And so, that's not your problem. But I wonder whether, you know, that just, that's another, another thing that sets these kids up for failure. And so, I just mentioned that because it's, if you ever have the opportunity to try to figure out how to get that done, that would be something we should...
The home program has ran into that before as well, and that unfortunately is a reality for a number of young people.
Yeah.
And they're having to grow up way too fast sometimes.
Oh, I know, kidding.
And the home program has literally went out and picked them up and taken them to school, so...
Could I ask you to look at page seventeen? The length of stay is really so bothersome. I mean, and I know, it all must come down to the scheduling of the court and the trials and all these other things, but the average stay seems to be pretty high. I don't know, what can you do to cut the average stay? What is there, is there any group there of the four, excuse me, of the three, that you think you could accelerate and get them out? Is there anything that can be done? I mean, when we adopt the, when we move the, build the building across the street and do all these things, and they have these alternative programs going, will those programs, to your knowledge, you know, will they, will they cut the, they have to cut the average stay, they have to, otherwise, we don't have room for them, do we?
I think, well, two of those that you see on that slide are probation and adult court.
Right.
I think we should pull the length of stay for adult court out of that whole number. That would drive that down. But what you were talking to Greg about with the probation violators, and that would probably be a question, I don't really want to speak for them, but you do wonder sometimes if things couldn't happen quicker for those kids. I agree with Greg in terms of accountability, and we actually see the kids that are going off to prison or in adult court, and so many times they say they wished somebody would have really gotten their attention earlier on, and things might have been different. And so, that gives you kind of pause, and it becomes a philosophical question. You know, we went out to Minneapolis, and I think they had three kids that were on violation of probation in their facility. And then, in Seattle, they had zero.
Right.
But then, you talk to the probation officers out in Seattle, and they say, you know, our hands are really tied, and there's not a whole lot, the kids know, you know, there's not a whole lot that we can do with them, so they, you know, they don't go to school. They only get detained unless they...
The accountability is not present then.
Right.
They have low numbers, but there's no accountability, that's not a good thing. Well, anyway, I am going to come out and spend some time and drill into these numbers, and I'm very interested in it, and always have.
Glad to have you.
I've got a whole bunch of other questions, but I'm not going to, I would like to go to, I guess, let's go to page twenty-six. If I can get there, here it is. The, of this group, you know, the philosophy that we are adopting at the, that we're trying to come into is, and Commissioner, both the Commissioners, Rogers and Borgerson are the leaders in this, and Commissioner Duda as well, but is that these young people would be diverted, you know, first of all, when they're, they get into programs that will help them stop what they're doing. And I look at this, and I think, okay, well, these are not, this is not a fistfight at Nathan Hale, you know? It's robbery, it's assault, domestic assault, controlled substance, theft by receiving, terroristic threats, all this sort of thing, pretty serious things. And I'm just wondering, which of those, you know, I'll come out and talk to you about this, but which of those individuals who committed those, or accused of committing those crimes, would qualify for some of these new programs, you know?
When they, when they come to us, it's, a lot of those are kind of out of our hands. We just, a few days ago, looked at the kids that were in adult court on bonds, and there was twenty-eight of them.
Uh-huh.
And the bonds ranged anywhere from no bond to million-dollar bonds to five-hundred-thousand. So, that's probably...
Well, I know you're the keeper, you're not the person who makes the decision on it.
We do a darn good job of...
Yeah, you take them, you take what you get, you know? But I'm just, I'm curious about that because that's, that is the key to the success of what we're about to do and what we've committed to. And I just, you know, I am, I'm quite concerned that the, you know, as I said, this is not a fistfight between two guys at Nathan Hale. These are robbery and gun charges and so forth, so, I mean, it's ratcheted up. I just, I ask that, I'll make an appointment, come out and visit with you.
Anytime, yes, sir.
Well, I do appreciate the work you do, and I really, I really like the way you present this, it's really useful.
Appreciate that, thank you.
So, I appreciate it very much. Keep it up. Thanks.
Before we go to the next...
Before we go to next speaker, Brad, go back to page seventeen, Commissioner Boyle mentioned. I was gonna make sure. The first group, juvenile non-probation, those are what we call county kids?
Yep, new charges.
Okay. Seventeen, your point. So, you were mentioning... He was saying that he might take adults out of the list, average length of stay. But hopefully, in the next few weeks, so that you get the report of the data memo that comes from JDI. That'll be coming in the next couple of weeks. There's a breakout that we're gonna start doing. Because the lowest hanging fruit of kids that's a possibility to get out of there are what we call the county kids. They aren't on probation. They aren't adult, but they're county and waiting. And the hope is to be able to look at those kids and see what services or possibly could be provided to get them out.
Okay.
Because their probation pays for the services for their kids. If we can get a better count for that number, what the hope is to try to move them out with some support services. So, that's one place to hopefully go with that. And page twenty-six. With some of the adult pieces, there's a conversation. And I think there's another day-to-day that'll go with that. But I don't know how many of them in that realm, but there's a few of them that may be in the same situation as adult because they're charged as adult. I don't know the severity of the crimes, but the conversation happened, too, that the same adult situation where you have some people in there on bail and they can't pay, there may be a chance that there are some of those youth there, depending on the severity up to some degree. So, I just put that out there for the complete record. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thanks for this. You know, every month, it seems to get a little better and easier to understand. I appreciate it. Just to go back to a couple on page twelve, when we're talking about average daily population. You indicated today's population is seventy-one. The 2019 average daily population is eighty. And if I read these right, I think it's on fifteen where you do a monthly breakdown. Last month's average population was eighty-two. Am I reading that correctly?
Correct.
Okay. So, the much baloneyed legislative change that went into effect now almost two months ago would have had a full month on the books in July. And in that month, we actually experienced one of our higher months of eighty-two. So, at least in that month, as far as we can capture, this isn't having a big effect in terms of reducing our population. Is that correct?
I mean, that number would indicate. July one, I know that, and I talked to Mary about this a few different times. And it was kind of a rocky road. And we did have a number of admissions in adult court that month as well, which that's a hard group to deal with.
We're not seeing a big diminution in population so far, basically.
Stay hopeful, but yeah.
The average daily population, again, it seems to be consistently in the high seventies, low eighties. The idea that we've got these probation violations making up a, you know, large portion of it. You know, and these other things, the charges in general, all beyond your control and not subject to anything that the youth center can do relative to admissions.
No, I mean, I really appreciate what Greg does. And, you know, when he tries to identify ways to move kids quicker, we certainly try to do what we can.
And I do, too. I mean, his reports are good. But again, we go back and look at the hard numbers and there just isn't any real diminution. The numbers remain very high. The average length of stay there at, you know, forty-four days. You indicated sixty-five percent new charges and basically thirty-one percent the balance is probation-related violations. That really hasn't changed. That mix has been fairly constant.
It's changed a little bit. I mean, I think if you look back at some previous reports, the probation violators was somewhere in the forty percent range. But I still think that there's plenty of room for that to move.
Right. Regardless of that mix, it doesn't seem to result in a diminution in our population. The mix may change, but the population remains the same. Am I reading this right? Okay. On page twenty-seven, we get to the admissions by race. Again, our minority population, the youth center is seventy-eight percent right now. I went back and did a five-year average, which is above seventy-five percent. And again, that doesn't seem to be changing either. Is that correct? I mean, I'm not seeing more than just a few percentage changes going back five years. I could go farther back and it looks the same going back, but is that generally correct word?
Unfortunately, yes. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Let me follow up on a couple of comments, Commissioner Kavanaugh made. And I think I can elaborate on this. So, as though the legislative change, it's one or two months out. I think everybody was saying you need about four or five months for the legislative change to work its way through. The adult population, from my understanding conversations for July, I think you mentioned this. It was a high number of adult charges in there coming in. The point was, I mean, at the one point that it was probably high there, about eighty-six, it worked its way down because Friday was at sixty-eight.
Yeah, we've been in the sixties in August.
Yeah. So, it's... There are some changes as a result of that to some degree. And probably at the end, I got a question for Greg about that. So, I just wanted to note, there are some differences to some degree. It was lower sixty-eight. Few things happened. July was a high month for adult. And I think hopefully, in the case processing piece, they'll work that way through with the county court and the juvenile court of how to get the process. So, that the issue of size, I think the people with the adult charges that are there are really the ones of the gravest. And none of them are... They're serving their time there. So, I think just to note that there has been some reduction and things are moving through the process to some degree. So, I think a better judge, maybe four to five months to see what LB eleven-twelve kicks in in a strong manner. Commissioner Borges?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is for Greg. Hi, Greg. On these... So, if you go down the list and talk about the out-of-home placements that were ordered. So, some of them... So, if you go down from the top, the first out-of-home placement ordered on seven-eleven-nineteen probation to make appointments for placements. And then you go down and there's just some that say out-of-home placement ordered seven-fifteen. There's two of those. Out-of-home placement and a valve on seven-twelve. The valve's still pending. And then it's just auto... Ordered out-of-home placement. Out-of-home placement ordered on seven-twenty-three. Out-of-home placement ordered. Out-of-home placement ordered eight-eleven. So, are there more details with these that obviously you're not gonna be able to fit on this spreadsheet?
Yes.
But so, again, if one's ordered or one has a date that it was ordered and it was way back in July of fifteen, is that kid still just sitting?
Typically, yes. And the reason why is because that out-of-home placement order is just the initial process. So, applications still have to be made. So, there's a couple of youth on here who they have been accepted, but they may be waiting interstate compact. They may be waiting for an eval, like a couple of them denoted. And then another thing that could drive something like this happening is that there's still a disposition because of applications that have been out. There's been... There's a young man on here who's been denied at every placement. And so, the only placement that was available for him is PRTF. So, you know, probation is doing a really good job of... Oh, sorry. PRTF is a psychiatric residential treatment center. So, a lot of... A lot of it is just contingent upon whether or not they're accepted, where... How long the process is taking, you know, to gain acceptance or to even be able to be permissible... Permissible to go through interstate compact.
So, of those, which, you know, I get that there's... They're in our facility and there's all these other things that come into play in terms of moving the kids. But I want to go back because I ask almost every time about the ones that are county kids. So, of those on this sheet, can we pull out... Pull those out? Look at those to determine where they are in the system? And then figure out how we can move them quicker? Because we have... We have less, I think, with those kids. Strings attached because of the other entity like probation, for example, not being involved in it. So, could we just look at what those... Who those kids are from this sheet? And maybe just have a little bit deeper discussion on how to move them through quicker?
Absolutely. And there's a couple of things that go into that as well, too. There's times when the public defenders or the defense is maybe possibly not wanting to go through the pre-adjudicating process... Pre-adjudication process in terms of evaluations or services that may be available to them. And in declining those services, that would cause a length of stay to be increased as well, too. And that could be... That could be something specific to the court, like the youth may deny doing it. So, if there was something that they're charged with and they're saying that, "I don't want to partake in this evaluation because I didn't do this and I just want to fight it," then that would cause the youth's stay to be a little bit longer. And I've seen a couple of situations like that as well, too. So, but we can definitely highlight those. And matter of fact, one of the youth on here was that... In that specific situation where that was a county kid. And, you know, the court date was just... It was just set out further probably than what it should be. And then I personally think looking at trends of where those outdated court dates are set could be something that would be beneficial as well, too.
And that was what I was gonna ask is, so you see some of these where the court date is a month or more set. Some don't have that, but just for the ones that do, that was my question. Is there any way to work with the courts to move those up in some way?
I think so.
And then the... It would be interesting to me as a whole, not necessarily just the county kids, but we could do it just for the county kids. You've mentioned a couple of reasons, but I would love to know your top five reasons why or what are making the system move so slow? So, and it's not trying to place fault on anybody. But what I'm trying to get at is, okay, if it is the court date is set, you know, a month or two out, why? You know, how can we work with the courts to get them in there sooner? And I know there's other issues that may fall into that discussion, but we have to start drilling down on those specifics and see if we could, again, move them faster than just having them sit there. And then I think that we would start seeing our population go down. And if it is, again, that they're having a hard time finding placements, then we need to know what those placement needs are, again, as we're developing programs. What's needed to either ask a community provider to start, build capacity? But we need more specifics in those categories. And maybe if we work with our county kids first, we can set a good example for moving them faster. I don't know. I'm just trying to find a way for, again, to move them faster. And then lastly, when they're sitting there, are we engaging the family to come into the youth center? Talk about, you know, the processes that are going on and the issues that are before us? And then where or what programs or services we're trying to...
Absolutely. And I'll have Mark talk about that aspect. But to address the point prior to that, the case processing committee, I think that's gonna be one of the things that we have earmarked to address. I will look at all the youth who are in detention with us. But in terms of my facilitation of those emails, I will really address those county kids. And I'll also create and facilitate the process for those kids who are currently on probation and have services. But at that point, it will be a kind of a handoff to the probation officer to take advantage, you know, to take charge of the direction of that course of that email. And in terms of accountability and things that have been done in terms of historical movements as well, too. And in terms of the rest of the stuff, I'll let Mark address that.
Okay, before you go, though, one of the other... So, if a kid's sitting there, is there the discussion that that kid could be put on the home program until that next court date? So that they're not sitting there, but they're sitting or they're at home with the... Is that...
We actually... We actually have had some movement in terms of that as well, too. Just within the past couple of weeks, I think we have one or two kids who were just sitting there. One was a domestic violence charge and was just sitting waiting on court. And being able to identify that between probation officer, between public defender and the home program as well, too, and working to get this young man out and on the home program.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Mark was gonna answer the last question.
If you could re-ask your question.
So, when a child is sitting in our youth center and they have a court date that's a month or longer to wait for, are we calling in, inviting in the family to talk about the whole scenario about what's going on and what they could potentially do? Because one of the things that... And I know I'm on my soapbox again, but sometimes it's the environment in which the child came from. Well, it's the environment that the children come from that are causing the issues. And if we don't get to some of those root causes, it doesn't matter if they sit in there for a year. We're gonna send them back and they're gonna go through the same thing again. So, is there... Do we reach out to the family to come in and us work with them to try to figure out what those issues are or how we can get them more engaged?
Well, certainly for those youth on probation, of course, that's a role of probation. And as youth are moved through adjudication, they end up on probation. For those youth that are there, we're always reaching out to the families to encourage them to find out what we're seeing and where their child is at. Certainly, we... I've already mentioned the parent meetings, which you actually initiated. And we've been going every month. And we've been gathering the information from parents. And that's one of the reasons that we reached out for more information regarding the crisis response. Because parents are on the cusp of trying to make a decision on what to do as things escalate in their home when a child is acting out. And in some cases, parents really feel that their best option is calling law enforcement. And law enforcement, they really do a good job of addressing for what they have at that time. But looking at the crisis response as an opportunity, the crisis response for those behavioral opportunities, having the discussion about law enforcement, reaching out and contacting them for some additional support. And hopefully, we're hoping to see youth diverted from getting in the system as a result of using the resource that's available through Lutheran Family Service. And Brad already mentioned that they're looking to expand their service. And, you know, the numbers reflect that there's a need in the North Omaha community in particular. You know, as we see individuals that are coming into detention and the zip codes that they're from. And looking at the actual number of juveniles that are being served in that... In this particular area, there's an opportunity for more. And Lutheran Family Services is making a commitment to hire more staff to have a crisis response as a dedication, not just in North Omaha, but to all five of the precincts for law enforcement. And we believe that once that... And, and we believe that once that's in place and, and we're making the opportunity where, where law enforcement is calling crisis response instead of probation in some cases, then we'll start to see some of those numbers go down. And, and at the same time, we're responding to what the parents are saying their big concern is. As things are escalating in the home, they'd like to make sure that their child is getting the support and services that they needed. But in some cases, once in the juvenile justice system, it's a different pathway for those services versus youth who are receiving a crisis response. In particular, in, in southwest Omaha and Sarpy County, you know, there's just evidence that that type of service helps. And so that's certainly one thing that, that's, we're looking at, at being a part of. And, you know, we, we really look at the individual youth when they arrive at the youth center. From the time they arrive, the principal of the school meets with each student individually and maps out their academic advancement plan. So that student knows exactly where they, where they need to be. We've added two online learning opportunities for students so they can stay connected to what they're doing at the youth center so they, they don't fall behind.
And I like all of that.
Oh, right. And we, as our family engagement liaison, every student that comes into the youth center, our family engagement liaison gives them information about the youth center, gives them information about the Nebraska helpline, gives them the direct phone number for our medical department and our mental health department. And we're, we're, we're really an open book. We want parents to come and visit. We're very pleased that our visiting members have gone up. And at the same time, you know, we, we had 12 or 13 family representatives at, at the last parent meeting. And that goes to show that parents really are concerned. Sometimes they're a little overwhelmed, but in, in most cases, parents want to be involved in, in what's happening with their youth.
Well, and, and I like all of that, and I get all of that. But again, that child's sitting there for over a month. And so we have a small enough number, the 40, that are today anyway, as the report, I know it goes up and down. That it's a small enough number for us to take that hardcore drill down. And in, I understand getting them all set up with their educational stuff is important, but I also think it's more important to figure out how to move them through the system faster.
And, and there's been some process steps in that direction. You know, we, we've mentioned the Charles Drew coming and being a, a part. And we also mentioned that we're still working through the contract piece with Creighton. So, you know, there's, there's some systemic things that, that are in place. We've been, we, we have our monthly multidisciplinary treatment team meetings. And, and we discuss every youth that arrives in our facility. And the individuals from promiscuous is there as well as probation, as well as psychiatric services, our mental health team, our medical department. So every youth is, is getting a direct look at with regards to where that youth is at. And, and for those youth that we expect we may be able to get on the home program or they may be able to return home, they're getting an opportunity to get connected with the Charles Drew. And Charles Drew has, they've made a commitment to hire additional mental health staff to assist youth as well from their, from their tracker position.
Mr. Mark, Commissioner Borgson, if I can, give me two months, that specific class of kid that you asked about, that data memo report, they're going to start adding that and breaking that down. So they'll, I think we'll start talking about it in the meeting. And I think give you enough information to work with to go from there, so. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. Mr. Alexander, just quickly, at the last Child and Youth Services Committee meeting, there was a brief mention by Commissioner Rogers of a newly proposed juvenile position, I think to be in the administration office of the county board. Have you been aware of this position going forward?
Yeah, I was told.
Had you seen the posting, the, the job description?
No.
Okay. I did request, I think from Mr. Bloomingdale, I don't think he's here. A copy of this because there have been no debates on this. I mean, there was a brief mention, I got the transcript because I went over it and there was absolutely no discussion of this at the last meeting. And I'm just trying to find out who, if anybody knows anything about it. It seems to be very mysterious and it's not public, but it seems to be imminent. So I wanted to see if-
I wasn't able to attend the last Child and Youth Services Committee meeting, but Mark did. And then he informed me of what was said.
And I guess I'd ask the same question, you've seen any of the information relative to this proposed position?
My, my first knowledge was at the OYS JDI co-chairs meeting, which was last month.
Okay.
End of last month.
But you haven't seen the, the posting or the job description or anything, is that right? Oh, here's Mr. Bloomingdale. Welcome back.
Good to be back.
We were just discussing the new proposed or discussed juvenile position for the commissioner's office that you and I spoke about during the day. And I think you indicated at that time that you were going to forward some draft job description or posting. Have you been able to do that?
I sent a job description, proposed position description to all the commissioners last week. I believe it's in there on Friday for your review. Does, we do not have a posting date yet. There's just still some things to figure out, such as, you know, what office we're going to put them in and things like that. So there's no date set yet.
Okay, Mark. Okay, do you want to briefly give us an overview of what that job description is?
So what this person would do is they would oversee, supervise the youth center director, the JAC Juvenile Assessment Center Director, the DMC Coordinator, possibly have some involvement with overseeing OYS staff, Operation Youth Success staff. And this person would also be responsible for overseeing and coordinating the, really the entire juvenile justice reform effort on behalf of the county board. So kind of like bringing people to the table from all aspects of the juvenile justice system, courts, law enforcement, probation, prosecution, obviously youth center, JAC, you know, everybody that's like a stakeholder and, and the members of the community, you know, bringing together to just try to carry out the county boards. What the county board wants to do in the juvenile justice reform effort.
And I presume at some point we'll have a public discussion on this because it hasn't been held so far. Is it scheduled for public discussion?
Well, we, I mean, that's up to the county board. Normally, when we create a new position, we don't necessarily do that. But that's really up to the county board to the extent that they want to do that.
Well, I mean, this sounds like a rather significant position. For instance, do we have a, an idea of what the salary range would be on this position?
Well, I think the, I want to say that the deputy county administrator position, it's going to be somewhere in the hundred, you know, hundred thousand dollar range. I don't have the range off the top of my head. I want to say it's somewhere between like 80 and 150. I think that it's kind of a big range, but that's not-
And so that's, you know, a significant six-figure salary and a significant, as you describe it, realm of responsibilities. I would hope that we'd have some public discussion on this. It might be useful and informative to the public to see how their money's being spent on this pretty new approach to a position that's just being created.
No, it won't be any public discussion on it. As Patrick stated, this is no different than a process than we've gone about in my 15 years here.
I'm sorry, did you say there'll be no public discussion?
This is no different process with a position than's been done in my 15 years. People here before me may know about it, but the fact is, it was brought up in the committee. There's no mystery about it. The position is a part of the agreements and conversations that were noted in the Sherwood letter. So as a result of that, this is a process of going through some of those steps and going through the process with them to get the, to allocate, to draw down the $5 million to start the program. So there's no mystery. That's why it was, it was brought up in the committee. To the question to Mr. Alexander about him knowing, I mean, when we do most positions, it isn't put out there like that. It goes through the process that it is. So there's no mystery to it and it's no change in the process that we've never done with it, so.
So there will be no public discussion, is that what I-
Public discussion will happen in the committee meetings if, you know, there's questions about it. But the public discussion will happen when it's posted and we go through the process of getting it. But let me note, this is no different than any other positions ever happened.
Well, it actually is, it's a new position.
It's not, it actually is not. With that, are you through on this topic?
Yeah, I'm done.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, I-
While Commissioner Borgson was discussing how to accelerate these court appearances, I remembered a comment that Kristen Lynch made at a meeting about trying to accelerate caseload on another subject. So Mr. Ash called the county attorney's office on my behalf and asked what the caseload is. And Don Klein took the question. They, at, today, they have an estimated 2,500 criminal cases in their office today. And that number does not include misdemeanors or juvenile court. So that doesn't even include these juveniles that are on this list. But they have 2,500 cases, the caseload is, it's, it's not easily, judges', the judge's docket is not easily finessed when this sort of thing happens. There's not a lot of openings. They have other hearings going on and a whole host of other, particularly in the criminal docket. So, and in the civil, of course, it's the same thing, but these are not civil matters. So anyway, I wanted to pass that on. So it's, it's really difficult, I knew that it was, and the numbers, you know, prove it. So I don't know what the solution is unless we, you know, you really can't have a separate judge handling only these juvenile criminal matters, you know, that just doesn't make a lot of sense. But, I mean, that may be a solution, but that would be a very expensive solution. And I, it means another judge. I'm sure they would not say that they are able to do that with the present numbers. So I wanted to say that. And I had one other question that I wanted to ask. Let's see, I think it was Mark that made a comment. You talked about Lutheran Family Services and this designation of a crisis. And I, I'm wondering, who, who causes a call of crisis? Who, who does that? Is it a police officer?
Correct. It, it needs to be, a call needs to be initiated from law enforcement. Which could in fact be OPD, could be the county sheriff, it could be the state police, or it could be from the Nebraska helpline. Those are the four pathways. Part of our conversation was, is there a, a pathway perhaps where schools can take advantage of that? And at this point, through the resource officers, that would be the pathway. But, but that conversation is on the table. And, and there was a question earlier about the truancy. OPS is, you know, they're, they have their drive for 95 with regards to their attendance. But they're, they've also are making some headway with regards to how youth are truancy and how youth are expelled and, and giving principals a little bit more pathway to address expulsions and hopefully keep some of those youth who are being expelled actually in the school versus them being outside the school. So the school district, they've recognized that's an opportunity and, and they're really making some headway to address it. And even some of the youth that are returning, sometimes we have youth that are leaving our facility and the semester is almost at an end. So as opposed to those students waiting at home for the next semester, giving them a pathway to where they can be in their school. So they're, they're not away from the, the school for such a long period of time.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thanks a lot.
And FYI, Commissioner Boyle, there, there's a conversation that the superintendent and I started next week, last week. And we're starting some steps to try to make a connection on how we can help with this program service piece upfront.
Thanks. I know there's some, I can never remember her name, Mary Ann Borgson knows her name. I was at a meeting-
Lisa Hutterback.
Pardon me?
Lisa Hutterback.
Oh, my God, she's absolutely terrific. She started off her remarks by saying, I know who these children are. She said, I was one of them. And wow, I mean, you, wow, just, she's terrific. Her mother, she says, my mother was a criminal. It's just amazing. I'd love to have her come down and talk to us.
Well, she'll be there, too. Once we get laid out, we can talk to her. Commissioner Borgson.
To Commissioner Boyle's comments about what county attorney Don Klein mentioned, the numbers, I mean, again, that, that doesn't even include the juvenile. So we're really not talking about the juvenile court or the juvenile docket or the juvenile county attorneys. But even if we do, one of the things that we may switch gears on and talk about, which we've talked about, I have for many, many years, and judges don't necessarily like it. But we could look at a youth night court or weekend court. Which would, again, if you have that, something happens immediately so that they're not going into the youth center to be processed and then sitting there until the next court date. Possibility, conversation, since we're looking at all programs and services, to be adjusted or created or established or whatever. So that one I place on the table as well. Still don't want to give it up on the adult side, but maybe we need to talk about it for the juvenile side of things.
You've done it, Mary.
Yeah.
Commissioner Duda.
Thank you. I, I've just got to say that so much of this conversation, when we talk about the delays, how slow the courts are to responding, if a kid has an evaluation, still might have to wait a long time to get a court date, talking about more courtrooms. I mean, all this comes back to, and the legislature wanted to give us a seventh juvenile judge. And we said, no, we have absolutely nowhere to put them. We put the sixth one in a broom closet. But the demand is there, the need is there. And if we ever are able to build our new juvenile courthouse that has more room for newer, more juvenile courts, I believe some of these things will become more efficient. So much of this conversation is just pointing to the need for more juvenile courtroom space than we currently have.
Commissioner Boyle, then Commissioner Borgson.
Oh, I, I'll, I'll pass.
Thanks. Commissioner Borgson.
The, the only comment I would make to that, while I agree to some degree, is that can't be the only solution why we move forward. So again, if there are things we can do or being provided or established that one keeps the youth out of the system to begin with, that should be the priority as well. And so I agree wholeheartedly with what you're saying, but it can't be the end all be all. We have to continue to look at those programs and services and different ways of doing business. And I know we don't have a whole lot of authority or, well, we don't have a lot of authority about, over a lot of stuff, but we still have our opportunities to pull people together to say, let's look at how we're doing this. It's not working right now. There's too many youth sitting in our youth center that, in my opinion, need to be moved along a little quicker. And so we just need to keep working on that and talking with those who have the power and the authority to move them quicker and faster through our system.
Thank you. Brad, thank you all. Can I, I've got one request. Greg, you, please come, please come, Larry, if you've got a question. Greg, when you, can you email me, you said since July under probation, eight kids were on there since the law? Can you send me that with that breakdown you mentioned up there? Just send it to me in an email? Okay. Question coming.
I'm not sure I understand the rules for this part of the program.
The rule, no, the rules are that this is an action item. Anybody can discuss an action item. So to your point that you're making that nobody can talk, that's not- So to your point that you're making that nobody can talk, that's not true. This is your point to talk if you want to.
I won't keep you long, because I understand you have another meeting on this topic, but my name is Larry Storey, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I sat in a meeting last night at the Omaha Public School Board. Very interesting. Reminds me a lot of what's going on today, or what went on last night that should be going on today here. They were setting their master plan, defining their goals, their responsibilities, their purposes. But you know what? They were talking about all these outside people from around the nation that was guiding them. And we had a person that's called the steering person, like we have steering committees, that's steering the, the board members or the public school board members or yourselves to the purposes of these people that live somewhere else. These experts that have best practices. Let me ask you, if their best practices, why is this not working at the school and family and church level? Are we not now telling kids that, oh, commit your crimes before you're eighteen, or maybe before you're fourteen, or what was the law in July, became age eleven, that we will not detain anybody anymore? And now we're talking about all of these programs that really should be at the home and school level? The Northwest Ordinance, granted land for that purpose, how much? For education. One quarter of each section for education. It didn't say that somebody else would do it. It left it up to the people that live there. So I'm saying, put the brakes on some of these programs that are recommended to you by people that are taking it out of my billfold, that aren't working. You yourselves are admitting it today, that a lot of it isn't working. Think about it. Put the brakes on, take responsibility for the school systems in Douglas County, and put those programs back their work belongs. Look at all the money that's going out to contracts, to outsiders, and put it to where it belongs. Let these people go to the school board and show them how it's done. They can train the school board, they can train teachers. Look at all these programs after school that are extra money. Some of them are using school facilities already. So why not bring the jail experts to the schools where the kids are? They're already there. Why send them to an after-school club where it doesn't work? Because nobody really controls it. The primary responsibility for that lies here. You supervise the schools, but then maybe you're told what to do by the NSA, the National Education Association. Put the brakes on it. Put the brakes on some of the liberal progressive programs down there across from the State House in that big building of the NSA. You're responsible, not them. You maybe know more about it than they do. I know about, more about my school district than they do. I know more about my child than they do, but these experts say otherwise. And I quite frankly don't get where all this data gets collected when there's privacy laws. And do parents really expect to have that much input when professionals will not talk about it because of privacy laws? I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Item D is community services. Item one is presentation and discussion on the proposed interlocal agreement with the city of Ralston for building permits, inspections, and services.
Good morning, Commissioners Kentholm, Environmental Services Director. A few months ago, the city of Ralston, city administrator contacted us and asked if we would consider, would be interested in, consider providing building permit and inspection services to the city of Ralston. And this would be in a, in a manner similar to what we would do, or what we already do with the city of Bennington, Village of Waterloo, and to some extent, the city of Valley. So we, we went through a due diligence process, looking at kind of our staffing, where we would, where we would potentially pull resources, need resources from an administrative and a permits and inspection standpoint. And we, excuse me, let me, let me back up here. After going through that process, came to a couple of realizations. One, with the move from our exist, from our previous location at, at Mankin Circle, moving out to the Fitzgerald facility, we, we gain efficiencies every day. We, we gain at least an hour of, of less of windshield time and, and some better efficiencies there. We're closer to the people that we had served there. So, so automatically, we, we had gained some time. Had we not made that move, we wouldn't be having this discussion at all today. But the other thing that we're doing in the department is to, is, is to manage some administrative resources a little bit differently. And so we've identified some ways to, to free up some of our, our other administrative staff and other employees to be able to provide some administrative support for the permits and inspections division. So with that, we went ahead and, and through our meetings with, with Ralston, kind of getting an idea of what, what they were looking for. We have come up with a draft interlocal agreement that would, would potentially take effect on October first, would include an annual evaluation. It's basically set up on a, on a yearly basis so that we take a look at this at the, towards the end of the first year and evaluate how it was working, whether we are adequately staffed to be able to continue that and so on. And then, then that interlocal agreement would roll over in consecutive, you know, for, for additional years. The interlocal agreement would be set up very, very similar to, to what we do with Bennington. We provide, provide those services. The, the building permits are, can be applied for, through an online form that can be downloaded and then emailed to us. With the city of Ralston scenario, we would be looking at, at having kind of a station there in their city hall that they would be able to, the citizens of Ralston would be able to go to that facility, just as they've been doing now, and then do applications there, and then they would be electronically forwarded to us. That also provides some advantages with the, with the city of Ralston collecting some of the fees initially, transferring them into a bank account, and then transferring them electronically to, to us. The bottom line is that all of the, the permit fees would come to the county to cover our expenses at this. And we've gone through that due diligence as well, figuring that if we're providing these services, we would need to have this amount of, of fees to, to be able to cover that. And so we feel comfortable in, in doing that. The other piece that, that kind of comes into play is, is this thing called Ascela. That is the, the permit tracking and reporting software that we use. We've had that for a number of years now. That provides us some, some increased efficiencies, and as we go forward, we're going to look at, at some actual online forms to, to apply for permits, which would further automate things and, and provide some additional efficiencies. So not quite there yet, but that's, that's in the planning process as well. As I mentioned, the fees, all of the fees would go to the county, cover expenses there. The other thing I would, I'd point out about the fees, we are proposing with this, that there's an administrative fee that goes along with, with the actual permit fee. That helps to, also to cover the costs of the Ascela program and the administrative costs of doing, of administering the permits and inspections. So with that, those are, those are the things I have to present for you today. Happy to address any questions you have right now. The draft interlocal has been reviewed by the county attorney's office. We have most of those things in place. There are a couple of, of kind of technical issues that we're working through with Ralston right now. They presented it to their council in, in some of their budget meetings. They will bring it back in September. I put September tenth. This is your next meeting here. I would propose, assuming that every, every, all the language, the, the technical Ts and Is and getting crossed and dotted respectively get, get done, that I would have this back on your agenda for September tenth. We'll have the, the full draft out there for your review and, and consideration. So with that, those are my comments. Happy to entertain any questions you have.
Commissioner Duda, then, Cabal.
Kent, this looks great. I'm very pleased with what you're doing. My only question is, when you say a station at the Ralston City Hall, tell me more about that. I assume it's not staffed, that you're?
Bad choice of words on my part.
All right.
Basically, it's, the city would, the city of Ralston would provide a, a computer kiosk or, or a terminal there for, for their citizens to come in. They, they would basically just pull that form down off of, off of our website, fill it out, they could process it right there, they could pay either with cash, check.
Okay.
Or a credit card, and Ralston would, would handle that part of the administration initially. They'd email the, the permit application out to us, and we'd process and take it from there.
Nice. How long have we been doing this for Bennington?
Since nineteen ninety-eight.
Wow, okay. I've never heard a complaint, a problem. I mean, I think.
It, it goes pretty smoothly. It actually kind of, since we've gotten into the stormwater business in the mid-two thousands, actually helps facilitate some of, because we have permit, stormwater permit responsibilities there, so having the, the permits and inspection piece of it actually helps us find some of those issues and resolve some of those issues. And that's the other thing I would point out, is that, you know, we have inspectors that are, are very well-trained, that they have a lot of expertise. I feel like, you know, they're a resource that we certainly can share with, with the other communities in the, in, in the county. And this makes sense from that standpoint. It also helps us, you know, now the fees coming from Ralston, that helps to, to offset some of the costs of, of that training too. So I, I think that this is a logical extension, and again, you know, we, we want to look at it on a, on a one-year basis initially and see, evaluate how it's working. We feel pretty comfortable at this point that, that this can work.
A good deal is a deal that's good for both parties, and I think this is one of those things. Thank you.
Commissioner Cabal.
Interesting idea. I guess the devil's in the details, so I saw no backup information in the presentation. I presume that this, this is it, is that right? Your presentation is the backup on this?
That, that's all I provide today. Yeah, there's still, there's still some of the, the clauses in the interlocal that I want to make sure that Ralston, I haven't, I haven't heard back from their, their legal staff and their city administrator in terms of, of those specific things. There are some standard clauses and things that, that I just haven't gotten responses back from them. Those are standard for a county contract, and I want to make sure that those are there before I put it out here for, for public consumption.
Right. So the three elements of the contract are offer, acceptance, and consideration. I don't see any mention of the consideration. How much money are we talking about in fees coming to Douglas County?
We're estimating that there's, there's probably fifty thousand at, at a minimum, based on their, their past track record of, of permitting from, from last year.
They've been permitting in-house for some time, I presume?
Mm-hmm.
So they have fifty thousand in their budget for permits and inspections?
That, that's the revenue end. That's the revenue end that's, that would be coming to us that's proposed.
Right. Do we have any idea what Ralston spends on permits and inspections?
That I, that I don't know per se, no. Because they have, they have, the way they are doing it right now, they have staff that have other, other duties. So I believe it's their public works person that, that does some of these inspections for them. And of course, so how you parcel that out, it would be a, a portion of his, his salary and then whatever other administrative costs they would assign to that.
So we have environmental services people who have extra time to devote to this, or would we have to add an FTE?
We would not be adding any FTEs. Where we're able to fit this is, one, what I, what I mentioned about the efficiencies that we gained in moving from Mankin Circle to, to the Fitz building. So we've gained an hour, hour per day at least right there. What we're proposing to do is then to move some of the administrative duties that the inspectors are doing right now over to some of our other staff. And I have staff there that I'm, I'm flexing with their jobs and, and changing that up a little bit, which provides some additional administrative support that we feel is, is going to be the best way to handle this. And it provides more time for the inspectors to get out in the field and do the things that, that they are specifically trained for, as opposed to doing some of the administrative stuff that I can, I can better assign to other people. So that, that's where we see the efficiencies coming in. With the Ascela tracking program, we see further efficiencies gained there. And so, and like I said, we're going to evaluate this after a year, and if we get, if we feel like, you know, this is, we, we are stretched too thin here and we, we simply can't go on, then, then we'll make that determination and, and, and move to, to get out of that agreement. But at this point, we feel like this is something that, that we can move forward with and assist Ralston and, and be, like Commissioner Duda said, kind of a win-win for, for both.
Well, it certainly is, but it doesn't cost us anything. I'm interested in whether or not it will cost us anything, and I guess I'd look at, what does it cost Ralston to do this now? I don't know if we can do it for the same or less or more, but I'd want to know that. The idea of the efficiencies gained because you've moved into the Fitz Center is, is good news. That's direct result of the savings that we projected for the Public Safety Bond in 2016, and that's excellent news. I'm glad to hear it. The idea of going forward and providing municipal services to municipalities in Douglas County is not something that, that we do every day, and so I'm interested in how the mechanics will work from a budgetary point of view. If it's, if it's good for Douglas County to do this, it'll be good financially for Douglas County to do this. And so before we go forward, it's important that we have numbers. And efficiencies are fine, but efficiencies is just a phrase. So how much does Ralston spend on this? How much would it cost us to spend on this? What do we have in terms of personnel to do this? And, you know, I'm, I'm all for it, but it doubles in the details, and I'm not hearing anything about numbers.
I can provide those numbers when it, when it's back on the agenda for consideration. I'll, I'll have that financial kind of analysis of what, what we've done in the past. So I can tell you definitively that I'm not going to go forward with any, I'm not even going to propose an interlocal agreement until I feel comfortable that we've done the numbers and that we are covering all of our costs. You wouldn't even see this if I wasn't, if I didn't feel comfortable of, of being at that point today.
And I have the same feeling. I, I want to go forward with it. I'm going to be comfortable with the numbers. I'd like to see it before it gets back on our agenda.
That it?
That's it.
Commissioner Boyle.
Kent, I just, excuse me. I just want to say, I think it's a great idea, and I, I can understand the questions about the money, but, you know, this, this is very progressive, and I really appreciate it. Anytime we can cooperate with a city or a village, and, you know, I, I'm really for it, and it makes a great deal of sense because you have the ability to do this. So I, you run a really terrific department, I want to say so publicly. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Moore.
Kent, I totally have a trust in your moving this forward and bringing it back to us. So, you know, when it comes back, then we can ask questions and so on, and if there's something we need to know ahead of that, you let us know. But I know that you're a good, and I'll use the term watchdog on this from what I've seen these past years, so I thank you very much, and I think, hopefully, we can get this initiated and move ahead and see how it goes for that first year, like you said. Thank you.
Kent, you're welcome.
You clear, Kent?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We'll go to item two, presentation of the draft landscape concept plan for the Douglas County West Campus. Back on you.
Good morning again, Commissioners Kentholm, Environmental Services Director. The point of all this is, is really just to, to kind of provide some, some overall, I guess, direction for, for I guess, direction for, for the West Campus landscape, specifically primarily around the Fitzgerald Building. As you may imagine, part of the construction out there, a lot of the landscape was, was disrupted and changed, and, and certainly that, that comes with, with any construction project. A couple of things that I want to point out here, though, this is, this is simply a concept. One of the, one of the things about having, and one of the things that I, I've been very aggressive on is going out and, and getting matching grants to, to help our county dollars go further in terms of developing landscapes. That's not going to change, but it is so much easier to have a plan in place, even if it's conceptual, to be able to go out and get matching grants. It shows that there's a commitment to, to a plan going forward, and the granting agencies really like that. So I would propose to, to continue doing that for this landscape and the Health Center and so on as well. The concept is basically that. It's a concept that then we have annual, if you will, pha- phases that have specific planting plans. Those types of things can be coordinated with, with public properties in terms of, of other improvements that go on. I mentioned the matching grants, and then pedestrian circulation I've also included in this because defining pedestrian circulation helps to define where you're doing certain things with the landscape, and whether you are doing things with the landscape to help define pedestrian circulation, to help funnel folks from parking lots to specific areas, et cetera, type of thing, or whether you're using it for aesthetics, screen undesirable views, for stormwater purposes, et cetera. So all of those things are, are kind of in, in this particular concept plan. So a couple of things I want to point out just right off the top, you, you will see that a lot of the, and, and the little, little green dots here are all designed to be conceptual trees. Canopy trees that, that are designed to be large, mature, provide a lot of shade and overhang. And you'll notice that, that these are all pretty much oriented adjacent to sidewalks and adjacent to parking lots, and that they are done, they're designed that way for a reason. One, it provides shade, it provides a, a better aesthetic, better functional landscape, cutting down on, on, on ambient temperatures. It helps to screen views that are, are not necessarily desirable, and just, just provides a, a more aesthetic appeal to the landscape. You can follow here. Phase one, there would, I would propose would be some trees up here along the existing drive to the north that will help, again, replace trees that were lost in the construction. There are a lot of trees that were old that, that had disease. We have a number of trees in the, the north tree line up here and the west tree line over here that need to be removed. We'll be doing some of that later this fall. There are also some trees that are around the building, around the building, Fitz Building itself and adjacent that were pretty severely impacted by construction, watching those pretty closely, and we just need to make sure that, that we don't have some hazards there that need to be addressed. So the other thing that, that is part of this plan is pedestrian circulation, and if you can kind of visualize, you know, from this point, the, the walkways that are gray right here are all existing walkways, and then I've drawn in, in this blue color, these are additional pathways which provide some, some circulation around the campus, very much in fitting with the, the county's health and wellness goals, providing more opportunities for, for activity. There's a pathway over here which connects over to, close to where the, the existing fitness area is in the building and so on. Then there are other pathways that I've, I've drawn in initially that would help address pedestrian traffic from the visitor parking lots here into the building. The majority of, of visitors that come to the building that are accessing the Treasures DMV area come through this particular entrance right here, and they're crossing here. I know Jerry Leahy has, has reached out to, to Dan Kudlech and, and working on kind of traffic, traffic studies to address that particular kind of intersection there. But I've drawn in a couple of, of pathways here and here, and then in the front of the, of the parking, visitor parking that would help to funnel visitors from, from there to, and across in crosswalks into the building to help enhance pedestrian safety there. So that's, that's some of the, the stuff that's happening with, with the landscape there. Over here, there's a couple of sections here that are designed to be more lower maintenance. We have trees here that are, are designed to screen some of those lower maintenance areas from the building, so even though it's, it's a lower maintenance thing, your first eye is going to see trees, and it's going to be screened there. There will also be screening such that, you know, you're, you're cutting down on noise from Maple Street and those types of things. The trees are also providing some stormwater benefits by intercepting water, the enhanced tree roots and so on, that are, that are going to provide better infiltration over time for the landscape, cutting down on, on runoff. The existing landscape also has two bioretention areas here that, that funnel, that take care of water coming off the parking lots. Those were part of the, of the construction project, and those are in the process of, of being established. Other than that, we have some, some focal beds at the, the entrance signage over here where we will add some color with annuals and perennials. Also here at the entrance to the building where we would have some, some additional color to add some interest there. I am looking at, at some, some irrigation improvements around the building. We have a limited amount of irrigation right now. It has to come off the hose bibs on the building, so looking at some, some potential enhancements there. Most of the, the areas right here in front of the building would be irrigated and have, have a higher level of maintenance from an aesthetic standpoint. Other than that, you know, I've, I've had some conversations with the, the sheriff and the law enforcement center about sightlines and so on. I mean, there's a lot, a lot of trees that are also envisioned over here. They are designed to be, be elevated such that you, you don't have compromised sightlines, and I, I've made a point of making sure that we don't, don't create safety issues and security issues there. So with that, again, this is just a concept, I wanted to put this out, out for your, for your view. I continue to work with, with Jerry and Public Properties on, on some of the details, but, you know, I think it, it makes some sense to have at least a conceptual plan in place. It certainly helps me going after grants to, to help with tree planting that, that can match the county funds. So with that, entertain any questions you may have.
Commissioner Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks, Kent. I actually like a lot the wellness piece to this because as we, Claire's laughing. We're going to start going out there and walking around the place. But we have talked that, you know, as a county, we need to start really looking at whatever we're planning, that we have that piece within our planning process, so I like that. Obviously, I would love to see more color and seasonal changing flowering, but this is, this is very good, and of course, the stormwater management is a big piece to it. But I was out there with Jerry and we did talk about the entrance that was, needed a little help at the time. But there's also a concept, and I mail, emailed it to Tom McDonald over at our County Engineers' Department, that I saw, I don't remember where I saw it, but it was a young girl, I think she was 11 or 12, and she designed a 3D speed bump that was just painted.
Right.
Not, it wasn't one that you had to, you know, wreck the bottom of your car to go over, but it was a 3D one, and it was, and it worked. I mean, they literally had a test period of it, and I can get you that, but we, we may want to look at that kind of a concept throughout this campus because it's used, you know, obviously to slow people down. So anyway, that might be a neat project to do at this campus. Have you seen it?
I've seen, I've seen that before, yeah. There is some public works, work stuff out there that, that shows those, and it, yeah, it, it-
Yeah.
It looks forever like you've got this floating thing right there and it just like kind of freaks you out.
It does freak you out, but, but the purpose is it slows you down.
Yeah, absolutely.
And again, without ruining your car. So anyway, just something to think about, but I like this, I like this forward thinking. I also have a, a citizen, a homeowner who lives behind me that has been looking at trying to get rid of those bricks from these two planters that they have. We're trying to find a place in Millard for them, but if not, if we could use them at this campus, that would be an idea.
They use them at the Opposite Aging? I know they're going to do some landscape renovations there.
We're looking at that too, yep, yep, but keep that in mind as well.
Okay.
Commissioner Moore.
Mary Ann, I know you drive a sports car, but I'd love to see that concept. Mike Boyle and I haven't seen it, but that'd be great, and Kent, if you have it, send it out to us and location.
Sure.
I think right now the city manhole covers are working as good speed bumps, but anyway, I'll look forward to that.
Okay. Thanks, Kent. That's all we got.
Okay. Yep, that's all I had, thank you.
All right. We'll go to item G, which is the Human Resource Committee. Item one is the weekly personnel report as submitted. No legislative items that I know of. Okay? With that, I need to ask the board to follow me real quick. There's a correction we need to make in BOE, so I'm going to ask if we can have a motion to recess the Board of Commissioners meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I just want to make a quick comment about-
Go ahead, please.
Criminal justice.
Please.
I have a, a meeting scheduled tomorrow with, just going to touch base with Kathy Allen and Paul Johnson. A couple of things is that we're going to be talking, I'm talking to them about the siren system for warnings, particularly with Paul, because there are some that are needed, and also some other options to warning, warning the public about dangerous situations. So I'll, when that happens, we'll do some initial talking, and then we'll have a, a meeting to discuss it fully with the county board. I wanted to bring you up to date.
Thank you. If I can ask for a motion to recess the Board of Commissioners, motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan, when the clerk is ready. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We'll now call back to order reconvene the Board of Equalization meeting. Do you want to call the room?
Commissioner Borgeson?
Here.
Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Cabot?
Here.
Commissioner Crapdis absent. Commissioner Morgan? Mr. Chair.
Yes. I'd like to ask for a motion to reconsider item F, and motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
One moment, please. Commissioner Cabot. Motion passes six to zero.
Okay. There's an item in item F that reads, it's CAC 51867 Boost Mobile, number 33079. It should be a minus sign in front of the amount. It says delete for 2018 plus 43,200, and it should be delete for 2018 at minus 43,200. Is there a motion to approve that? And a motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan to approve that item with that change. Whenever the clerk is ready, let me know. Okay? Please vote. And before that, motion is to adjourn the Board of Equalization.
Motion, you said, yes, Commissioner Boyle. Motion passes six to zero.
All right. Ask for a motion to reconvene the Board of Commissioners. Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Okay, thank you.
We do have need for executive session. We reserve the right to enter into executive session in order to protect the public's interests with respect to discussion regarder, just regarding just labor negotiations. With that, is there a motion to go into executive session? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan.
Really quick, I don't think we, I don't have everyone's vote yet on the reconvene.
Okay. Oh, that's mine.
Oh, I think it's just Commissioner Rock.
Sorry.
Okay, so that motion passes six to zero.
And again, we are going into executive session for labor negotiations. We got a motion second. We got a, no, we got a motion by Commissioner Boyle, I think second by Commissioner Morgan. Whenever you're ready.
Okay, we're ready. All right, motion passes six to zero. Motion passes six to zero.
So you can see the crosswalk.
What was that? Oh, they saw it in there.
Can you record me?
Yes. They better.
Isn't that a riot? Oh my God, I love that. We need to find out who's doing those too. No, but who's the contractor? That's not that Boyle &amp; Boyle company, is it? See you later, buddy.
And you're a yes to adjourn. You're a yes to adjourn.
Yes.
Okay, I got you. All right, see ya. And you're a yes to adjourn? Yep, okay. Motion passes. All commissioners present voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you.